Hello Ron and welcome to a new season of Channel 781 News Debrief where we go over everything political in Wall fam as well as some cultural things as well. So we're going to start a new season of this because the new season of the city council just started. Joining me today is Jamie Kirkellis.
Ron.
And we have a special guest Colleen Bradley MacArthur, City Councilor at Large coming on later in the show. But just getting right down to it, so we have a new session of the city council. There are some new city councillors that are coming on and there were some old city councillors that are leaving. So let's, let's talk about what is different this, this session. Well, in Ward three, Bill Hanley's in, George Darcy is out. In Ward nine, Robert Logan is back with Jonathan Paz not running again with running for mayor unsuccessfully. And then at large Paul Brasco is back in and Patrick O'Brien is out. Did I, did I miss anything there? I think that's correct.
You got everything.
Yeah, yeah. And very quickly, this is a very short anecdote. I thought it was very strange through. There's a tradition in the city council when a councillor is about to leave on the last city council meeting that they're there for. They're allowed to give a short little farewell speech, a little spiel. And it's also a tradition that they help chair the last meeting if they're not already the chair of the meeting. It's a nice little thing that happens. It's, you know, people have been there decades sometimes, usually in wall fam before they leave. So like, it's a nice little thing, you know, you, you give a speech, you chair the meeting and then the mayor gives you like a, like a plaque. And so at the, at the last city council meeting in the year on 2023, the outgoing councillors showed up to the city council meeting. They had a plaque on their desk and they were like, this is a weird time to get the plaque. At the end of the meeting Kathleen McMiniman, the president had no time, gave no time to any of the councillors, any three of the councillors that were leaving. And for two of them, it was their first time leaving. Patrick had already been given that time in another, in later years because he's been on and off. But for Jonathan Paz and George Darcy. They were not given the time of day at the end. And for George, who's been in, in the city council for decades, decades longer than Jeanette's been in office. It's a, it's just a, it was a sad thing. So I'm sad to see George not being able to get that. And so also on the first day of the new city council being inaugurated, you get the new leadership and then that new leadership assigns to the committees. And so you've got John McLaughlin being crowned the president of the city council. Not unheard of, you know, when, a couple of years ago, when Kathleen wasn't there, it looked like it was between John and Kathleen. So I'm not super surprised and honestly, there are worse people to get the presidency than John. Jamie, I don't know if you disagree with me.
The more interesting thing I think is that Joey LaCava is the vice president.
Yes, yes. So Joey ends up being the vice president. It is surprising to me. Of course, you know, Joey's got all the credentials, the whole resume for it. He's got all the connections. I really like, it's not like, it's not like he's undeserving of the role. I just really didn't think he'd like want that or that he would end up doing that. But John and Joey are also very close. And so like, you know, you know, I'm, I'm not super concerned about the two of them. I think, I think they're both for the wall fam city council, pretty fair. I think, you know, they'll, they'll be fine. John, in his, in his acceptance speech, he talked about the importance of being able to disagree and still move forward. So, you know, I'm hoping he keeps to that. And he gave an anecdote about his family talking about the need to do service for others and they count being on the city council is that. But, uh, you know, I'm hoping, you know, I'm not, I'm not that worried when it comes to like the new leadership. So which is good, which is good. I'm, I'm feeling okay about it. You know, on to the new committees. So I can, uh, so, uh, so these are the new and old committees. And so you've got for chairs, you've got Randy staying the same. So Paul Brasco, after being gone for so long, he joins as the chair of the economic and community development meeting, which was used to be held by Anthony Fauci. Anthony Fauci moves over to becoming chair of finance, uh, which Joey LaCava had. And Joey LaCava moves from finance to the vice presidency. Sean Durkey keeps Veterans Affairs. Kathy and Harris keeps ordinance and rules. Kathleen McMiniman takes over for long-term debt, uh, which is really the only like empty, truly empty spot. Because with Patrick O'Brien leaving and she stepping away from presidency. And then Carlos Fidal taking over, uh, just staying the same. I'm sorry. He stays out of the committee for a long time, staying the same in a licensed franchise. A couple of interesting things about that. I thought it was very interesting. Stop showing my screen. I thought it was very interesting to see Paul Brasco get, uh, taking over for economic and community development. I thought that was interesting because, you know, he just got back on the city council after being voted off the island by constituents that were clearly unhappy with how he conducted himself in the council chambers. And then after getting back on, uh, a jury of his peers decided to give him the leadership position in economic community development, which I also think is a weird committee for him in general. Also interesting, Robert Logan, who hasn't been on the council in four years, five years. He has the exact same committees is when he left, like the exact same two committees is when he left. And so I think it's, uh,
Not in leadership on either.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, I think it's just very interesting. It's just like, we're just opening the door like, please come on, Robert, welcome back. The tea is still warm. Like here's, here's your committees back. The politics of the city council is just very interesting to me. It's just a big club and you and I are truly not in it and they are just hanging out by themselves. Which is of course, uh, not to say I wasn't totally unhappy to see Robert. I think Robert gets a lot of flack. Uh, but he's by far not my least favorite city councillor. He by far does not have the worst politics on the city council. And I also think that he is the only current city councillor that at least tries to be funny in the city council. And I think for people that watch this, they'll, they'll notice that. And, you know, he tried, he tries and fails sometimes, which is also funny, but I appreciate the attempts of levity that Robert Logan brings to the city council. And speaking of levity, uh, in the very first licensed and franchise meeting that Robert was on, immediately after everyone voted for Carlos Vidal to be chair, Robert Logan immediately micromanaged the rest of the meeting, which I thought was really funny. And here I'll include a clip of Carlos Vidal saying, thank you. I'll take that into consideration. But, but, um,
And the other thing is, and I don't want to hold any of these up to do it this time. But one thing that we used to do periodically, not every year, but every once in a while is we would, you know, pick a year and we would conduct site views. So we would go around when the applications first came in and we'd actually go to all the room, rooming houses and lodging houses.
That's what all these departments do.
I know, but we, we used to do it.
The council, the, ask the councillors.
Yep.
Interesting. Okay.
You know, because we're voting on it. So just something that we might want to keep in mind for, for next year. You know, you'd want to give them advance notice and everything.
Of course, of course. Something to take into consideration. Thank you for sharing those thoughts about, you know, what we used to be done here. I think something that we will consider it moving forward, not probably this year, perhaps the following year, that'll be a good idea. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Cool. That happened, I thought was interesting with that, in that micromanaging way. He was talking about how he hopes that the city council can go back to the tradition that once was where for lodging license renewals, they would go like once a year to all of these spots that, that were there for those sites. And they've stopped doing that, but it reminds me back in, I think, 2022, when Paul Kate's had that one moment of like, of like, of that brevity.
Of accidentally pushing back once on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of rubber stamping it like they usually do. Yeah. So it's interesting to see happen.
Yeah.
Quickly come back down hard on that.
Yeah. So that one time. He, um, he stood up to Brandeis and said, maybe we shouldn't give their lodging renewal license because of all the deplorable conditions. So maybe if Robert Logan was on the city council, he could have micromanaged his way into getting all the councillors to go to that site to see the deplorable conditions. Instead of what actually happened, which was Paul Kate's folding immediately after, just the next week, immediately.
They had all the, they had all the people in charge come in and say that they were working very hard on the situation. You took them at their word and you've done.
Yeah. It was an email, I think. I think it was an email.
You're talking to.
Yeah, but I just thought it was interesting. I hope, I hope. Well, that's true. I hope they do do yearly sites and I hope they do go to the places where they're, you know, just check marking and rubber stamping and, and lumping into things and voting them all at once without even really looking at it. And so I thought that was interesting. Um, and so that's, that's really the landscape of the city council right now. Um, and you know, a lot of, uh, there was a lot of hope for progressive movement in, in the city council in, uh, last year. And that didn't really come to fruition. And I think we're in a worse spot in the, you know, progressive movement, uh, quotation marks than we were. But, you know, the city council goes on. Jamie, you have any thoughts about the city council as a whole, about the people or the committees?
Nothing specific. Honestly, it wasn't that surprising when things shook out. I mean, it was kind of funny that they jumped right to throwing Brasco out back into running a committee and, but not the same for, not the same for Robert.
Yeah. Robert did get on Robertson, uh, ordinance and rules, which is a very interesting. And also Bill Hanley, brand new city councillor, he's put on finance. Um, and while Colleen Bradley MacArthur, while she did get an additional committee assignment, both the committees are kind of like whatever assignments, they're both licensed franchise and, um, long-term debt. And they're like, you know, they're, they're committees and she's got a new one. But it's interesting that they gave Bill Hanley a brand new city councillor on finance, which is arguably the second most important committee. While Colleen still, you know, doesn't have that many interesting assignments.
To balance it out, to balance it out, he gets to be on, um, licensed and franchise with Colleen.
Yeah, no, they, they, they share, they share that. All right. And something that's not going to be talked about on the committee and I think we'll talk more about this at a different point in time as well. We'll go more in depth. But at the end of a city council session, uh, you have to move all, everything that's in a committee docket over to the next year. And so you have to physically move everything that you want. And of course you can do that with one vote or you can do that with many votes. It depends on who's running the meeting. But there is an opportunity to file things that you don't want to see happen every year, um, at the end of every session. And so, and of course filing means that you're doing away with it for a year. You can, no one can physically talk about or
And that's filing, filing with prejudice versus filing without prejudice. Because if you file without prejudice, you can, and the stated reason for doing this is to sort of clear the table of things that aren't getting actively worked on. And I guess where you're going with this is that one of the things that wasn't, or was explicitly not carried forward and then there was the tenant notification ordinance that was being worked on by Jonathan Paz. And I believe Colleen had signed on to that as well. But, um, was not carried forward. And then, uh, during like the, one of the last, like the last session, uh, councillor Darcy had tried to have it so that all the things that were getting tabled were getting tabled without prejudice rather than with prejudice. And they had a whole vote specifically tabling everything with prejudice. And I actually at the time had grabbed councillor Durkey because regarding that one specific ordinance, because his ward has such a high number of evictions and asked him why he voted against this or tabling everything with, without prejudice, especially when this is part of it. And he's, the, the answer he gave me was that he didn't want to have too much extra work. They're like too, too much like, didn't want to like have, make a lot of extra work for the people running things essentially is what I took from that.
Well, yeah, one of the talking points was that do it, that all the paperwork involved would be, it would be impossible to do, but other cities can figure out how to do it. So it was, it was, I was never a good talking point for me.
And also like tabling without prejudice doesn't strike me as like, it's a lot of things with, yeah, filing without prejudice. Or doesn't strike me as something that would cause a lot of extra paperwork. It just means that they don't want to talk about those specific things.
Totally, totally.
The fact that they went out of the way to do specifically vote against that.
And so we can talk about this more at another time, but I mean, it's truly telling. This was a bottom of the barrel, uh, you know, immigrant tenant rights resolution ordinance that was just trying to give people a piece of paper with the rights that were already.
There was no monetary ask of the landlords. The only thing that they were required to do was to, to send a letter 30 days before eviction to the tenant in a language that they can read with information on what existing services are available to them to get money to pay the rent. And that was a bridge too far, apparently.
And apparently, yeah, apparently for the, for the wall fam city council, that was too much. And also the mayor as well, who came out against it. And so that is something that you will not see talked about this year. As well as some, some other things, um, you know, George tried to get these filed in a different way to talk about them. To talk about them at a different point in time, but, um, he failed at that. And it's interesting because a lot of those resolutions were Georges. And so George, right up before he was kicked out of the city council, they decided to kill a lot of his bills right in front of him. And so it's a, a little more cutthroat ending of the last city council session than I thought there would be. And attendance rights ordinance, uh, which a lot of people worked very hard on is no longer a thing, at least for a year. Maybe in a year we'll, we'll see it again, but that is very bottom barrel stuff. And so hopefully when we start getting stronger, uh, asks made of the city council, we can come together as a community more effectively.
Yeah, they, they very clearly seem like they are, they've just got re-elected. They feel very secure in ignoring anyone who's asking about housing.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, it's also, yeah, it's incredibly telling that that was killed immediately after the election, not before. It was just like a perfect time, perfect time. Um, so moving on to the first city council meeting of the year. It was a, it was a two-hour one. There was one contentious public hearing and then a couple of, um, of resolutions. Paul Brasco in, uh, and I guess the first opportunity to be able to do anything. Of course, this is the second city council meeting. Uh, after be, after the first one, which is, which you can't actually do anything because there's no committees or whatever. But so Paul Rascal, the first, it's, uh, in his first act as a city councillor back, he takes something out of order in the very first part of the meeting to talk about, um, Paul Tracy and using his death to, uh, push a resolution forward, looking into figuring out where we're at with the police station. And for folks that don't know, um, I would say like three, four years ago, there was a a, a lot of chatter about where we're going to put the new police station because apparently there are deplorable conditions there. I've seen pictures. They are not that great there. They do look deplorable. And it's been going on for a long time. And, you know, I say three or four years ago, I'm just saying that's the last time it was talked about. And so, so we haven't heard anything since. And I've actually been wondering as well. And so Paul Brasco decides to use Paul Tracy's death to push momentum towards a political item, which is this police station. He gives a great soliloquy about how Paul Tracy's best friend. And, you know, he wanted to see the police station get built and he knew that he was never going to see it because he was retiring and blah, blah, blah. And so there's this resolution.
And that should be named the Paul Tracy.
Yes, yes. Which was, uh, which was interesting to me. I don't know if that's actually going to happen. And in it, Paul, Paul Brasco mentions that Paul Tracy, I didn't know this, Paul Tracy was the first law enforcement officer in wall fam's history to die on the job, which is interesting because I'm told that that's a dangerous job. So, um, but so that was the first thing that happened in the meeting and I thought that was interesting. And, you know, if I, if I was curious about the, uh, police station, I might've just asked her, but if we want to use a strategy, a tragedy to push a agenda item forward, I've seen it done before. Darian LeBlanc, uh, was the person that loved, uh, using that kind of stuff for pawns. So Paul Brasco wants to do it to score political points because he just came back on the city council. More power to him. Good luck.
Right. So the, what, what's been going on at first half is essentially they are converting commercial office space, which is less in demand, uh, especially after the, uh, people started working from home. Converting it to, uh, lab space, which is in more demand. And that's just space that has like more storage for like gas and like equipment and things like that. Especially for like, um, biotech type things. The and this is placed right along like the first half in Winter Street, I believe, is where the location was. Um, so it's right by like the Cambridge reservoir and then, um, the rest of that sort of area. And there were two people that spoke, one in favor, one against, uh, that weren't directly from the developers. And it's interesting that they're both Ward nine residents. So, uh, we'll have clips.
I thought it was interesting, like they were two really opposite sides of the spectrum. And to be clear, there are other people that talked as well, but, um, like some, uh, some union folk as well. But there were really like two people that really stood out. There was a man that was for and a woman that was against. And so, and I think it really like encapsulated the arguments very well too. The person that was for was saying, you know, this, these kinds of develop, these kinds of commercial developments really like keep our tax rates down and they're very important. And, you know, you know, it's very, it's so nearsighted, uh, that kind of argument, uh, because, you know, that's just kind of how we got to where we are in the first place.
Especially because like what they do is they will pay off like the traffic impact of these places. They'll just pay it off and then it'll go sit in a fund that might get used maybe. And then everyone is like, why is traffic so terrible? We just added a bunch of jobs.
No, 100%. I mean, traffic is a huge part of it. And it's like, it's like.
Adding jobs and no residences means you're going to have traffic.
100%. And, you know, the homeowners against that, um, the homeowners on paper love it because, you know, that's, that it's corrected. That's how you keep your taxes low. Uh, but you know, like it's kind of nearsighted because you don't really understand the consequences of those kinds of things when you're just building huge, huge commercial developments and they keep building them bigger and bigger and bigger, uh, because it benefits them and theirs. And, you know, the community of people who want to benefit the people that want to benefit them and theirs, uh, but they don't really care about like what happens next.
The, the external cost of building a little mini Boston to the west of Boston is that you're going to have all the traffic of Boston.
Sure. And I mean, you're going to have astronomical rent prices as well. If you keep building huge commercial developments and not enough affordable house. It's just, that's just going to happen. Uh, so they don't really care about like the direct correlation between rubber stamping huge commercial development and building affordable housing. They don't really care about gentrification that occurs from this or what it does to the climate. Uh, and so.
They view the increased tax base as a direct benefit.
Yeah.
To get disproportionate.
Yeah.
It's disproportionately spent on suburban services.
They care about them and theirs and those that feel similar to the, to, to that attitude. Um, and then on the completely opposite side of the spectrum, you have this woman coming in who I've never seen before in my life. Talking about, uh, the exact opposite argument. And, you know, I didn't agree with everything she said, but she brought us some interesting points. She said literally that, that all development was bad development, that none of it actually helped the city in the long run. None of it was ever helpful for the environment, that all our homes are going to be lost to flooding soon enough. You know, I don't. Yeah. I mean, it was really, it was, it was something. I don't agree with everything she said, but it was like, you know, it was like a canary in the coal mine. Like I was just like, damn, are we going to look back on this?
Well, I mean, realistically speaking, it is good to point out that like no developer is going into this out of the goodness of their heart. And like, like they're not going to build themselves out of profitability when it comes to housing. They were always going to have the rents going up and they're always going to do, they're legally obligated to do what is most profitable for their shareholders in a lot of cases. So they're not going to do anything differently. So from a certain perspective, she's right, like there is no good development path out of that. And so, yeah.
But I just thought it was interesting that there were two very opposite ends of the spectrum there.
I do not see development as progress. I, I see development as making more money for developers. And maybe the town, but I don't see this really for the town because what is the good for the residents? You, there's all this money being talked about, but will that money get to people's, reduce people's taxes? I, I live across the river from the big new apartment building, the 400 unit apartment building that caught on fire. We were evacuated.
Also related, like their, their councillor then following up, asking if they're going to have high-speed charging stations was just like amusingly out of touch.
Yeah, yeah. You've got one person saying like, build independently. And you got one person saying build nothing. And, and Robert Logan's like, you're going to have electric vehicle charging stations?
Does, uh, include 12 electric vehicle charging stations in the parking areas? Will those be rapid chargers?
They're charged.
They're charge point, uh, rapid chargers. Yes.
They're going to be rapid charged?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, uh, installation of secure bicycle racks on site. Will they be in covered locations?
We have bike racks in, actually I should know, they're, um, I believe they're outside. They're, so they're, they're not undercover, but we, we do have bike racks there. And I, I just want to clarify on the, the rapid chargers. It's level two chargers. So it's faster than your home level one charger, but not quite the Tesla supercharger.
Okay. But on the, on the bicycle racks, is there any ability to provide some sheltering or provide some bicycle racks? Like in a parking structure or something like that?
I, we, I don't, I don't think that would be just hold my tongue.
So, so yes, since there's no parking structure at this facility, then the ability to sort of bring them indoors and have a dedicated space for it is, is not there. There is changing and shower facilities inside the building. So you can go in there. So if you ride your bike there, you can go and change, not smell horrific as you do your job.
So that was the most interesting part of the meeting for me. I honestly don't have that much more to say. Kathy and Harris brought in a couple, uh, resolutions, uh, looking at the way we talk about, uh, special permits. I'm not, uh, we could talk about that when.
That was like specifically about standardizing the way that they like calculate the price that they tack on to special permits.
Yeah. And so, and so the people have brought that up in the past. I'm, I'm more interested to see what happens in committee. We can talk about that more later. But, uh, I really don't have any more to say. Do you have anything on the, um, most, on the, on the new year of the city council, any other?
Not on that specifically. The, the resolution related to adding a couple of slip lanes in various places was carried forward from last year. And I'm going to try to like, probably cover that more specifically, but, um, uh, that happened. There, there was some stuff that happened to that in previous meetings, so I'm looking to cover that right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And joining us now on the show is Colleen Bradley MacArthur, who had a very strong showing, um, in the most recent municipal election. She's even better than I thought she was going to do, um, and continues to be, uh, to really have the, um, the progressive movement, whatever's left of it. Really just completely on her shoulders now. 100%. It's just all on her. So Colleen, how is your back doing? How are you feeling? What, how's the, how's the general vibe of the city council?
Yeah. So I would say, uh, so I'm doing well. Thank you. I definitely, it took me a very long time. I would say up until I walked through the doors for the Mass Municipal Association event last week to really feel like I had won. Uh, I know that sounds strange, but I did a lot of, uh, sort of mourning for all the folks that didn't win. And really, um, took some time to contemplate, excuse me, what that meant. For, you know, the movement as a whole. And then finally took a moment to celebrate my win, um, as I walked into the Mass Municipal Association meeting and feel good about that and feel as though, uh, yes, there's a wait. However, I feel like and this sort of ties into the Mass Municipal Association meeting, I feel like the next two years are about education. So I've had some really great conversations since the Mass Municipal Association meeting with folks like Karen Dunn and Robert Logan. And it's really been, uh, about education. So I go right into, I've listened to, binge listened to, if that's a thing, uh, Strong Town podcasts, a couple of Strong Town podcasts. I've got the book from a constituent. And, uh, the other thing for the next two years, my other theme is regionalization. So I feel like I have a really good relationship with our neighbors in Weston, the city councillors there. And just listening to the things that they're working on, the ideas, I mean, they have, you want to talk about a progressive city council. I mean, Carolyn Bays is one of the city councillors there and she's the head of progressive mass. So can't get much more progressive than that over in Watertown. But they're doing things that, yes, they're progressive, but they're reasonable.
Sure. Um, speaking of listening, I thought it was so interesting and also inspiring that immediately after the election, you did that town hall in the fernald. And I thought that was so interesting because as soon as the election results came out and I saw basically from the program. From the progressive movement, you were the only one left. I was like, it makes no sense for Colleen to rock the boat. She should just keep her head down and just do whatever the work she needs to do. And just for two years do that. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't flack you at all for if you decided to do that. And then immediately. You just went against the grain, uh, and did a, did a public hearing, uh, without actually being a public hearing. I thought that was so interesting and so inspiring. So I'm glad you still, you know, you're going to keep your voice, uh, while also, like you said, listening as well. And so I'm, I'm inspired by that. Um. And so, yeah, some people were really bummed out, you know, me included, you know, we were bummed out. I, you know, I saw the writing on the wall a while ago, but I was bummed out. Um, so, uh, can you try and convince folks like me that the city council is, is worth watching, is worth paying attention to? And that, you know, we're not all just going to be doomed, uh, from the super conservative thing that's happening right now, which, which isn't really the case.
Yeah. Uh, let me give you a few signs of hope. And, um, it goes back to this education piece. So. Uh, the Mass Municipal Association is a trade group for elected and appointed officials throughout Massachusetts. And at one point between the two day event. Every city councillor from Waltham attended, and that was partially because Sean McLaughlin, our city council president. Is now also the president of this trade group, the Mass Municipal Association. And that means they were there for the dinner, but a lot of them were there for the educational sessions. And one session that I went to that I saw some other city councillors. In was the diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, the significance for municipalities. And there was. You know. Some realism of sort of hearing, you know, these cities and towns adopting a diversity, equity, inclusion officer and thinking about. How far away we are from anything remotely close to that concept. However, it was a conference and it was an education session that other city councillors from Waltham attended. So they either sat there and didn't learn anything or something went into their brain. We can only hope. And I know for me. It gave me something to aspire to, uh, just in how I conduct myself as a city councillor. The second session that I went to was, um. From nine to five to twenty-four seven, building thriving business districts. And right before we were going into the last breakout sessions of the day. Councillor Logan said to me, oh, I really wanted to go to that one, but I'm going to this one. Uh, it was about federal funds, our marking federal funds. And I said, okay, I said, I'll go to the business districts one. You go to the federal funds. We'll grab coffee next week and share notes. And so we are going to do that next week. And I have to say, uh, the building thriving business districts. Basically was Strong Town, Strong Towns. You need a strong downtown. You do the thriving downtown. It's not just nine to five. I mean, all the things that we have all been saying. About a more organized Moody's Street, a safer downtown, a safer city, right? So there has to be hope in there. There has to be a kernel of hope in there. And in my conversations with folks like Karen. And, and even John McLaughlin, you know. Like I'm putting these ideas out there and saying, that's not just me. These aren't my ideas. These are. You know, what's in the, the mix, right? And it. The Mass Municipal Association is a somewhat conservative organization. And so for them to have these sessions and to be talking about these things, like I've got to feel like. And I've got to feel as though. A good portion of the city council heard those things and are marinating on them.
Okay. So I don't want to take up too much of your time. In one minute, uh, what can people do right now to help the progressive movement succeed in two years from now? When, when the municipal election happens again?
Yes. I really need people to show up to city council meetings. And not just when there's a big thing, a big hoo-ha. I need people to show up all the time. Jamie and Chris and, um.
Mostly Jamie right now.
I haven't been in, I haven't been in like a year.
I know, but you, you went even when it wasn't cool or even when it wasn't. Jamie.
I, I made it cool.
Yeah.
And you did. And we need people to show up even when it's not, uh, an exciting thing going on. Because. If we don't have that presence, they're going to think that no one's paying attention again. And that's not true. Or only certain people are paying attention. So we need lots of people to show up. We need lots of people to keep getting together. You know, I was thinking about this the other day. I miss everybody. I miss everybody from the campaign. We had such a like camaraderie. And we need to just keep getting together, whether that's just a coffee, a meetup. We got to keep getting together.
Absolutely. Um, so thank you very much, Colleen. Thanks for coming on, uh, and we'll, we'll see you again soon. And that's right when our free Zoom, uh, meeting ended, and this is us making a new one. And through some editing magic, here we are right now. And so that will conclude our, uh, show for the first show back for the day. I'm excited about this. If you want to get involved, yeah, in things like this, um, Channel seventy-one news is always looking to expand. We're always looking for people that want to talk about Waltham stuff. Um, if you're not interested in being on camera, there's so much backend of this stuff. There's editing work, you know, just talking about what is worth talking about. Um, you know, the conversations leading up to things like this are important, um, and it helps us as well.
Or meetings you're interested in, feel free to attend them and report back.
Yes, yes, yes. I want, I want, we would love to do more on the school committee. We'd love to do more on the traffic commission. We'd love to do more on the city council. Like Colleen said, going to these meetings are important. I did my time. I did. Three years of it, uh, in the city council, um, but I, I, I don't think I can do it anymore. But join Jamie, who's been really taking up the helm with us. Um, and, uh, and yeah, if you, you know, any, any inclination of a desire to want to get involved, we can find something for you to do. Um, so looking forward to continuing these videos, looking forward to talking to folks. So thank you very much. Thank you, Jamie, for chatting.
Night of the room.